I swear in Mr. Tenello.
Okay.
Please say again, can you repeat it again? I state your name.
I, Richard Tenell.
A citizen of the State of Florida and of the United States of America.
Citizen of the State of Florida and the United States of America.
And being an officer of Pasco County.
Being an officer of Pasco County.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Florida.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Florida.
Thank you.
All right, welcome.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I was a little concerned there, you look like you were.
Too many words to remember.
All right, so we'll have the roll call.
Kevin Ryman.
Here.
Michael Cox.
Here.
Eric Hansel.
Here.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Roberto Sides. And Chris Williamson now being represented by Mr. Tenello.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
Okay, you have proof of publication.
Sue, the items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on January twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
All right. Thank you. So, anybody who plans to come up and give testimony today, would you please stand and be sworn, raise your right hand?
Do you swear or affirm testimony or guilty evidence, if you can help you out?
I do.
All right, thank you very much. I don't believe we have any amendments to approve. So, I'll lay out the instructions for those of you who haven't been here before. The Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice a month. We serve as the local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions. Certain appeals, variance requests, however, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioner meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format of our meeting, our procedures are as follows. We have a continuance, anybody who has the applicant or staff who's requested continuance for one of the applications, it's been our tradition to approve those continuances unless there are extenuating circumstances. We have a consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, items where we have not received objections from the public or the staff, those items will be gone through one at a time. If there's something on the consent agenda that you'd like to have pulled and discussed today, just raise your hand and we'll take it off consent and we'll talk about it today. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be voted on at one time to approve all the items remaining on the consent agenda. Then we have the regular items. Those are items not placed on the consent agenda and we'll go over those individually. Applicants will have three minutes to make presentations and objectors will have three minutes to state their concerns. Following any objections, if there are any, then the applicant will have ample time to respond. If there has been a request, at least twenty-four hours in advance of this meeting for extra time, we may extend the time. As far as I know, there has not been any requests, is that right Denise?
That's correct.
Okay. So, before we get started, I'd say, I want to suggest to you that if you have a phone with you, that you silence your phone or put it on vibrate where it won't disturb somebody who's making a presentation. But before we start the meeting, we want to open the meeting for public comment. For anything that's not currently on the agenda, if someone would like to come up and make public comment, this is the time to do it. So just come forward and state your name and address and let us know what you're concerned about. Anyone? Okay. So we can start with the agenda.
Okay. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. We're going to go over a couple, well actually, three continuances. Item PC one is PDD nineteen seven-three-nine-one, special exception, ANMAR builders for a church and daycare center and a PUD plan unit development. The applicant has requested a continuance to the February twenty-first Planning Commission meeting at one-thirty in Newport Ritchie.
All right, is the applicant present? All right, is there anyone here to object? I don't see any objections. Have a motion?
Move to continue.
Is that the only continuance?
No, there's three of them.
Oh, okay, I still like to do them one at a time. So, we have a motion to approve that continuance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item PC two, PDD nineteen dash zero-six-one-eight, Long Lake Ranch MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, TRF Office Florida LLC for a substantial modification to an MPUD. This comes to you with a recommend, actually, this is a request from the applicant to continue to February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, one-thirty PM in Newport Ritchie.
All right, is the applicant present? Is there anyone here to object? I don't see any objections.
Move to continue.
Motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The following item is, if I could direct your attention to PC nine. That is PDD nineteen seven-three-eight-nine, special exception for Ryan and Elizabeth Pryor for a private school in a baseball and softball school in an agricultural residential district. The applicant has requested a continuance to the February twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting at one-thirty in Newport Ritchie.
All right, so that's PC nine?
Yes.
Okay, is the applicant present? Yes, no, maybe so, oh, okay, I see you back there. Okay, anyone here to object? All right, their motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Favor the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to go through the regular consent agenda. Item PC three is PDD nineteen seven-three-eight-five in the name of Valdez Family Properties LLC for a zoning amendment from R four high-density residential and C one neighborhood commercial districts to a C two general commercial district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present? All right, is there anyone here to object? All right, let's go to the next one.
Item PC four is PDD nineteen dash seven-three-eight-four in the name of M.A. and Sons, Inc. It's for a rezoning from AR agricultural residential and C two general commercial districts to a C two general commercial district, and this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there anyone here to object? See no objections?
Item PC five is PDD nineteen dash seven-three-eight-eight. It is a special exception, Wesley Chapel Martial Arts Academy LLC. This is to amend conditions of a previously approved special exception in a professional office district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? No objection?
Following item is PC six, PDD nineteen seventy-three-ninety. It is a special exception in the name of Catherine Stansbury and Lorna Mara Clark. It's for horse boarding and riding stable in an ER estate residential district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay, anyone here to object? I don't see an objection.
Item PC seven is PDD nineteen dash seven-three-eight-six in the name of Andrea and Christopher Clark, Jr. It's for a rezoning from an AC agricultural district to an AR agricultural residential district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, again, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? No objections?
Item PC eight is PDD nineteen dash CU eighteen. It is a conditional use request for its craft life brewing company for the sale of alcoholic beverages to COP and CMVP beer and wine only on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a brewery, tap and tasting room with outside services of alcoholic beverages on a patio in a C two general commercial district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Denise, just real quick, and this is for clarification. Finding a fact and a recommended conditions, I think, isn't there a typo in the square footage allowed?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, does that need to just be clarified, cleaned up? Says three thousand thirty-two, I think it should be thirty-nine, thirty-two.
Thirty-nine, thirty-two. Yes, we will clear that up, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Are there any objections? Okay, do I have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The PC will now, the Planning Commission will now be acting as the local planning agency. Erica Willand, Planning and Development. Item P ten is a comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAL nineteen oh-four State Road fifty-two Industrial. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment from EC Employment Centers to IH Industrial Heavy. The subject property is located on one hundred and thirty-eight point six acres and is located on the south side of State Road fifty-two and west of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. The subject property is currently within the CPEV, the Central Pasco Employment Village. The applicant has proposed to amend the sub area policy two-nine-twelve CPEV. They, it's located on the south, on State Road fifty-two and west of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard, and here's a location map. The subject property is comprised of four parcels and the applicant is proposing to develop the site as an industrial generating land use. The applicant is requesting to remove the subject site from the CPEV aerial plan that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners in March of two thousand and ten. Here's the existing future land use as EC Employment Center and the proposed future land use as IH. Here's a map of the CPEV. The subject site is predominantly surrounded by RES one and ROR to the north, RES three to the south, and IL to the east. The subject property is predominantly surrounded by vacant and agricultural land. Here's an aerial, aerial shot. The applicant is proposing to, accompanies amendment to IH, and the CPEV called for industrial uses. However, the applicant has now decided that with the Euclidian rezoning, that they're going to do a development agreement that would get rid of the noxious uses that are allowed in IH Industrial Heavy due to the residential surrounding the subject property. The IH would give them more flexibility to do what they want to do. However, with the development agreement with the Euclidian rezoning, it will strike through all the noxious uses that would usually be allowed with the IH Industrial Heavy.
Can I ask you a question here?
Yeah.
So, EC, the way I read the code, it allows light industrial and target industry.
Yes.
So.
Well, I thought it was targeted industry and industrial.
So did you read section five-twenty-two point five of the code as to what is allowed in EC MPUD?
Yes.
And tell me where, where does it say you're allowed to do heavy industrial that isn't a target industry?
I was under the assumption that the applicant was using a targeted industry.
I agree it allows targeted industry.
That's what, so, what we're going to do is go back and do the development agreement that would allow for the targeted industry and then get rid of the industrial heavy noxious uses.
So I guess my question is, if EC already allows target industries and light industrial, then what's, what's the need for the change? Why, if EC, and part of my concern is EC has restrictions such as you can't put metal buildings right on the road. IH doesn't have that, so, you know, I'm not understanding why we're moving from EC, which is target industries, light industrial, to IH, which is heavy industrial and doesn't have any of the requirements of EC. So I, that's not clear to me, especially when this property fronts fifty-two. I mean, is staff supporting metal buildings on fifty-two? I'm not sure what, why staff is recommending this change.
It was under my impression that the IH would give the applicant a greater flexibility to do more of what's needed for the county depending on the uses, because the IL is, unfortunately, it will limit the type of uses that we would see for that particular property and the IH would give it more of that flexibility and then that way the development agreement would get rid of any of the noxious uses that are associated with the IH industrial uses.
That's why you didn't go to, my question wasn't about why they're not going to IL, my question is why isn't that staying in EC?
Could I refer to the applicant as to?
Okay, go ahead.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Yes, Cynthia Spidel, King Engineering, forty-nine, twenty-one Memorial Highway, Tampa. I have been sworn. I apologize, David, that you weren't part of some of our initial meetings that we had with the county when we came up with the IH as a, as a sort of the compromise. The main thing that we wanted to do here was remove ourselves from the CPEV boundary. The applicant knows a lot of the people within the CPEV boundary. A lot of them think that nothing's going to happen for another ten to twenty years. We just want to remove ourselves from that obligation, we don't want to wait ten to twenty years. And we want to go industrial, because an industrial site does not need to be MPUD as well. My client is interested in just a standard Euclidian rezoning so that we can remove ourselves from the boundary and actually develop the property and not have to wait for the surrounding landowners to sort of do an MPD plan and a financial plan. So, fast, you know, go back a couple of months, we actually met with the county, we sat down with P, PDC did this whole big ready sites program. This site was identified as a potential site for industrial. It just so happened that some of the people that were looking at this site would have needed heavy. So when we met with the county, we had the Economic Growth Department there, Melanie and the new person, I don't remember his name, they came and we started talking about the differences between light and heavy and what to do and we collaboratively came up with heavy industrial together as a team. So, so as we were going through this, we had staff support, you know, today was the first time I actually heard that you objected to it, this is, so this is news to me.
Well, I'm not sure any people you met with have the history of CPEV that I do, right? So I don't know, anybody you met with was here when CPEV was approved?
And that's very possible.
CPEV was approved as a mixed-use project, which had an employment component, a residential component.
Correct.
Retail component, and it was a collaborative effort of all this property, so.
Correct.
Yes, it is unfortunate you didn't meet with anybody who was here when CPEV was approved. That being said, I understand your concern about not wanting to wait for the larger MPD, I get that. But, I'm not understanding why it still can't be developed consistent with the original vision of CPEV, which was target industries, light industrial. Now, what you're saying is you want an IH land use and you're going to do a development agreement that effectively makes it target industry and light industrial, like, that's probably okay, but I'm not sure if that's what you're saying.
Well, because I don't know, because the target industry list changes and my concern would be that there's an industry that Pasco wants to bring that might not be on that list, so I would.
Typically, we want to bring in target industries, that's.
And I, and I, and I understand that, however.
In fact, there's one right after you on the agenda, we're about to hear.
So as this objection came up, you know, I was just talking quickly with Erica over potential solutions and yes, one solution would be IL plus target industry. But we, or we could do, at the time of rezoning, the Euclidian rezoning, we could just go through a development agreement, we could sit down with you as well and just, just cross through some of those things that might be concerning to you.
If you're committing, when you come in with zoning, do a development agreement that maintains the original vision of CPEV, which this was going to be target industry and light industrial, then I don't have an objection. Is that what you're proposing?
I don't know exactly, because I'd like to go through the target industry list and I'd like to sit down with my client to go through that. Like I said, this is the first time I've heard of an objection, so I'd really like to, you know, we are doing a companion rezoning, it has been filed. So I just would like to evaluate that further before we actually finalize an IL or IL plus target, or, and I'm not sure how you do IL plus target in IL.
Well, you could do.
Would I have to do a PD?
I, I, okay, if, let me repeat what I said. If what you're proposing is that when you come in with zoning, you're going to do a development agreement that says, yes, it's IH, but I'm going to do a more restrictive list of target industries plus light industrial, and if staff has a finding of fact in their, this agenda memo, saying you've made that commitment, I don't have an objection.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Because I do agree with you that there are probably some target industries that are not allowed in IL.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was the whole point of EC, which is EC allows both tar, heavy target industries as well as light industrial.
Right.
But if your real reason for this, which I'm hearing now, is that you don't want to wait for the larger MPD, I guess I can understand that as long as you're willing to live with the original vision of this site.
Okay. I mean, it sounds reasonable to me, but, you know, like I said, I would want to sit with my client and go through the target list and just make sure we've got all our bases covered and address anything in that development agreement, which obviously would come back before you.
So you're asking for a continuance?
No, not asking for a continuance.
No, I don't think they need to continue, but I think staff's going to have to add a finding of fact to this that contains that commitment that they're making.
Correct.
I don't have any more comments or questions, though.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions while I'm here, or want Erica to finish her presentation?
Anybody else have questions? Okay, is there anyone here to object?
I have a comment.
If you'll step forward and give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Judith Geiger, I live at one-six-two-two-five Bellamy Brothers Boulevard, Dade City, and I have been sworn. I believe rezoning the future land use on this piece of property to industrial heavy is very short-sighted. This is a gateway to Pasco County, you come off the interstate and if you hit and see asphalt plants, junkyards, whatever, which is allowed in IH. I think a better way would be perhaps to take it down to an IL, which is to the east, industrial light. Let me just note that IH will not allow for, according to the comprehensive plan, will not allow for motels. And we all know, we desperately need motels at this interchange, we do not have them. I think they've covered, you've covered it very well on the, but let me just read, in the comprehensive plan, industrial heavy is to recognize areas suited for development and of all industrial uses which may have objectional aesthetics and be associated with adverse noise, smoke, dust, or vibration. And then you look at an IL. Intent is to recognize areas suitable for light industrial for other uses without objectional aesthetic impacts and without adverse noise, smoke, and dust. I, I don't know why the EC would not work for these people, I'm just saying, plan smartly, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, this is Nictara Espitos with Planning Development. If I could just ask if staff could finish their presentation before.
Eric, did you? Did you finish? Looked like you were finished, that's.
I probably interrupted her in her presentation.
That's okay, that's all right.
It's all right. A transportation needs assessment was not required. And the, this is the proposed amendment to the sub area policy. So what the applicant had proposed, in order for the CPEV to make their minimums and maximums of the industrial uses, the applicant had proposed that their industrial use could count towards the minimum maximum that's included in the CPEV. And on February nineteenth, a neighborhood meeting is scheduled for all the property owners within CPEV, so that way, although they were notified, we just wanted to make sure that the property owners within the CPEV understood what was going on and what it meant for them if the four parcels were taken out. And with that, we recommend to find the proposed logical comprehensive plan and map amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
The end, is that the end?
It's the end.
I think you still have more public comments.
Was it?
Still more public comments.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, I know we had some more comments that wanted to be made. Mr. Schrader?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ted Schrader, thirty-one, three-oh-six, Pasco Road in San Antonio, Florida. I'm not here today to necessarily object, but I do have some things I'd like to clarify and possibly to get some, answer to some questions. I'm the partner in Cedar Hammock Incorporated, it's an eight-hundred acre piece of property directly south of this subject property. If you could ask staff to go back to the map, I'd like to clarify. Cedar Hammock has a perpetual conservation easement encumbering the entire eight-hundred acres. And unfortunately, the FLU map still indicates a RES three land use designation as well as some of the backup information that staff has presented today. So, if you can go to the next slide, look back the other way. To the, to, right there. So, the area, you can see up the right-hand corner was RES three, it's showing that entire parcel is RES three. And unfortunately, because we're not required, I guess, by the state to do the year reports any longer, that probably should be conservation as opposed to RES three, and I think that's important for the Planning Commission to understand and recognize. But also, if you can go to the aerial portion of it as well. If you notice, there's a long, narrow strip that is on the west side of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. That's a seventy-foot strip that Cedar Hammock owns fee simple, and that is not encumbered by a conservation easement. So I want you to understand that this, the property that's before you today does not have access to Bellamy Brothers, it simply has access to State Road fifty-two. So, part of your documentation says, indicates they have access to Bellamy Brothers. They just want to make sure that they understand they do not. Also, apparently, in the, in the land development code, a type B buffer is required abutting residential. And because ours is a conservation easement, we would respectfully request that they not be required to do a type B buffer. And I've had conversations with the applicant and they're in agreement to maybe do something that's more natural and native as opposed to a type B buffer. I know you can't condition the plan amendment to do that today, but I want to go on record so that staff is aware of that, and if there's some way that can be worked out in the future during site plan and then also if we could be notified of whenever a site plan is coming before Pasco County, we just want to be made aware of that.
So, okay. So, Mr. Schrader, I don't know if you heard the applicant earlier, but it sounds like they're committing to do a development agreement when they come in for zoning. So your request to deal with the buffering could be dealt with in that development agreement?
Yeah, and that's the first that I've heard of that, and that's actually probably an acceptable way, at least to us, is that, that we would be encouraged by that, would really like to see the language that's prepared during that development agreement. But I just want to make sure the Planning Commission as well as staff was aware of the errors in some of the documentation that was presented today. And hopefully go on record that we'd be notified in writing about whether it's a development agreement or site plan. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Anybody from up here, would like to make any comments, ask questions?
So, can I ask Cynthia one more question?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Cynthia, can you? So, when you come in for the development agreement, are you, is your client going to be willing to address some of the other EC issues, like not having metal buildings fronting fifty-two, that kind of stuff?
I haven't really had an opportunity to talk to him intensely about that, but I think that those are all things that we'd be willing to, you know, to discuss with the development agreement, absolutely. development agreement, absolutely.
All right. Do I have any more questions?
Okay. We have to insert any new language then?
Well, it's, I think, the commitments that were made today about the development agreement and having more restricted uses than what IH allows, I think staff's just going to have to add that as finding of fact to their, you can't condition a plan amendment. But staff can add findings of fact that contain the discussion that we had today. So I think you just move for approval with the recommendation of staff make those changes to their staff report.
Okay. All right. But what if they don't do it?
Well, so, so staff doesn't necessarily, if they, they still have to rezone it to something. I don't know, well, let me ask, what is their current zoning?
The current zoning is agricultural. It's AC.
Right.
And we have a concurrent Euclidean rezoning application on file, and the comp plan amendment adoption and the rezoning adoption are scheduled to come back together. So we will be coming back to the Planning Commission with the Euclidean rezoning in the future.
So they could, when the zoning comes back to you, they could bring the development agreement at the same time?
Correct.
So you can make sure they do all these things?
Yeah.
And they don't?
Then you don't have to recommend approval of the zoning?
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll move forward with, there will be a development agreement that would move forward through the local planning agency, hopefully next month in March, together with the rezoning to I-2.
The good news is that, the good news is that Planning Commission is both the local planning agency that hears the development agreement, and the Planning Commission that hears the zoning. So you hear both.
Okay. Were you going to speak to it, or? No? Okay. All right. So is there any further discussion from up here? All in favor?
Will they know the changes to the staff report?
Subject to...
They'll know the changes, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve and a second, which is subject to, you know, you writing the things that we discussed in the plan. Okay? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
I have it.
Opposed? Motion carries? All right.
Hello. Amy Hyler with Planning and Development. You are still going to be acting as the local planning agency in this case. Item P-11 is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of Project Canopy. The applicant is requesting a large-scale amendment from ROR to PD to allow for light industrial, research, corporate parks, and target industries included into their general range of potential uses. They are also doing a sub-area policy amendment to Long Lake Ranch, it's a text amendment, to also add the light industrial distribution and logistics, research, corporate parks, and target industries to their general range of potential uses. We did take this opportunity to remove any language that was pursuant to the development, or the DRI, the development review, or, I'm sorry, the DRI, development of regional impact language, rescinded in, from the BCC back in July 10th of 2008. So we ended up doing that in conjunction with this. The subject property is located in the South Market area at the southwest intersection of Sunlake Boulevard and State Road 54. As stated previously, the amendment is, or the applicant is requesting an amendment from ROR to PD to allow for the general range of uses, as well as the text amendment. The subject area, or this inset depicts the existing land use of ROR, and this inset depicts the proposed flu of PD. The site characteristics, the subject site is located within the Long Lake Ranch MPUD master plan. It is identified as parcel A and B within that master plan, as well as a part of sub-area policy flu 7.1.1, Long Lake Ranch. It consists of category 1 and 3 wetlands, which will be mitigated pursuant to policy flu 1.2.3, and in accordance with that, stating that there is no industrial uses permitted in or around category 1 wetlands. And there is also a wellhead protection area with this, in accordance to policy flu 1.217 and 1.2.211. The industrial light uses will not be allowed in conflict with this policy or Section 808 of the groundwater protection in the LDC. This is a depiction of the site plan that shows you where parcel A and B is located. The surrounding area is predominantly vacant with residential and agricultural uses. The subject, or the comprehensive plan amendment is consistent with the intent of PD, as it provides a variety of land uses and intensities with the development, and encourages large-scale employment opportunities within Pasco County. It is also inconsistent, or is consistent with policy flu 1.2.3, category 1 wetlands, as it will mitigate and provide adequate buffering with no industrial uses adjacent to the wetlands. It is also consistent with policy flu 1.87, economic development, as the amendment is proposed to attract future high-paying, employment-generating land uses and target industry employment opportunities. And also, policy flu 8.1.2 within the South Market area establishment, as it's consistent with the vision of the South Market area by attracting a broad spectrum of employers and businesses. The transportation needs assessment was exempt pursuant to LDC Section 901, as it has office, industrial, and corporate park uses. Those are exempt from time, the transportation needs assessment. The non-residential uses that are not exempt from the transportation needs assessment are either at or below the maximum allowed. The, there is no comments with utility needs assessment that is sufficient, as well as no concerns with schools or emergency management. The only request was emergency management stated they have no concerns, but at the time would like to review the project design. With that being said, we recommend that the LPA find the amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. I would like to also include with this, there is no residential increase in this request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
I have one. What would be the impact on the schools in that area? I noticed on page 506 that you indicate that police fire schools, but you never, there's no comment regarding the school attendance.
Correct. Because there is no residential increase. So there's no increase to density, so they said that there was no comment, since there's no residential increase.
We've been in touch with this, as it's been going through, and so we've just looked through it all, and, you know, there is no increase, so.
Okay.
The one thing I did want to mention, though, was I'd noticed on the rezoning that was continued, there was a mention about amending Condition 16 regarding the multi-use trail along the southern boundary. And we would, as that moves forward, we would like to be involved in that, because that's, boundary does go to one of our school sites, it hasn't been developed yet, but we do own the site, and that's a very important corridor to get the kids that live in Long Lake Ranch to the school, if that ever is to be developed. So I didn't see it in here, in the comp plan, but I did see it in the rezoning, so I'm just wondering, and make sure that we stay involved in that.
Yeah, that should be covered in the MPUD, so we'll address that there.
Okay. All right. Anybody else here to speak to that? Ms. Barber?
Good afternoon. Barbara Willhite, 2523 Permit Place, Newport, Richey, Florida, 34655 for the applicant. I think staff has done a very good job of presenting the application to you, and yes, Mr. Tonello, we know that's a very important trail, and Mr. Goldstein's done a great job on your behalf. It was just some language tweaking, and it will be presented to you on the 21st, when the MPUD comes to you.
Okay.
But I can guarantee that we didn't get out of anything, so. And by the development of this property moving forward, we'll actually start developing, you know, our piece of it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. Joel Tu, Palm Harbor, Florida. I am land use counsel for the Jurassic family who own parcel C on the east side of these parcels, and also they own parcel D on the west side, where the multi-use trail goes across. I also am representing Madam E. Holmes. They're under contract to do the residential development in parcel C. Obviously, we're all part of the same MPUD, as a consolidated MPUD, so I'm here to do two things. Number one is to state that my clients presently have no objection to the plan amendment portion of this. We did have a concern, which we think we've resolved, and that's what I want to put on the record, and this is a lot like your CPEV discussion. Generically, in their plan amendment, they desire to use the very broad term, light industrial, which would include a whole lot of uses that would be a problem for my clients with the adjacent project. My clients also have a private deed restriction on parcel AB, because they sold that to T-Road Price originally as the economic development parcel. So some of the uses that theoretically could occur under this plan amendment would not be permissible under their deed restriction. What we've agreed with Ms. Willhite and the applicant is that we will address the tightening of those permitted uses in the MPUD portion, which you continued. And we agree with them, it's probably smarter to use the broad provision in the plan amendment as long as they tighten up the MPUD provisions. Ms. Willhite sent me the last version of those by email this morning, just before I got here, I haven't read them. So we will also be back in two weeks, when you consider the MPUD portion, to deal with the multi-use trail, as Richard said, and also narrow in on those uses, because we are concerned, we love the fact that they have an employment user, and they have a prospect now of getting something going. We also have an employment user on our corner of Sunlake Boulevard, a large healthcare employment user, that actually, this morning, sent me a letter of intent to expand what we had told you when we did the approval back last year. They want to buy a second parcel for more healthcare-related employment, which would actually use up our multifamily parcel, so we would reduce your impact on the school that we discussed last July. So we have a lot of good things happening at Sunlake Boulevard, we're anxious to see it go, but, but we do need to monitor and stay in touch on the MPUD to make sure that we get a better definition of what their use really is, and make sure that, that it conforms, and I'm sure it will. So no objection to the plan amendment, but just, we'll stay in the loop on the MPUD.
Yeah, we'll talk about that more when it comes back then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are we done?
Unless you have any other questions.
No, no, I thought you were coming back up to say something.
No, I was trying to change it for you guys.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay.
Item P-12, PDD 190614, is a large-scale comprehensive plan tax amendment in the name of CPAL 1908 Legacy. The subject property is located on the north side of State Road 54, one mile west of the Sun Coast Parkway and three-quarters mile east of Gunn Highway. The subject property is zoned MPUD master plan unit development. Proposed is a text amendment to the sub-area policy flu 7.1.18 Legacy. Here's the subject property. The existing future land use is PD plan development. Here's an aerial map. The subject property contains mixed residential uses, and the applicant is proposing to clarify that the entitlements are subject to exchanges trade-offs permitted by the MPUD that were initially estimate, there were initially estimated development entitlements in the land use, the land use data table. The applicant has also applied for a non-substantial modification to the legacy MPUD. There is a RES 3 to the north and south, PD to the east, and IH to the west. There is residential to the south, conservation lands to the north, and the South Branch Ranch MPUD to the east. Here is the proposed sub-area policy. You can see how it's stricken through, where it says that such amendments shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan with the 9J5 Florida Administrative Code. That's stricken out, because that's been repealed, so we struck it out, the sub-area policy. And further down below, you can see that we made it clear that the land uses that will be exchanged or pursuant to the adopted legacy MPUD master plan development. The legacy MPUD has been designed to implement development standards that achieve the goals of the PD designation, as well as the ULI vision of the South Market area. Portions of the legacy will adhere to the TND design standards. The subject property is located with the South Market area establishment, and meets the goals and objectives. And we find, we want you to find the proposed large-scale comprehensive plan tax amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members Clark Hobby, Hobby &amp; Hobby, PA, 109 North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida. I'll keep this fairly brief. I think most of you all are familiar with Astoria. When this was approved, there was a settlement agreement with the county, it had been a very contentious matter, and it was going to be at one point, it was proposed for a single-family development. The settlement agreement imposed a series of conditions, both in the MPUD and the sub-area policies, about the mixed-use nature of the development, and it was really something that David and Mr. Gallagher were keen on. And sometime later, my client, the owner of the property, is State Road 54 Land Associates, which is an affiliate of Heinz interests, which is one of the largest office developers in the world. And they've been very successful in creating the kind of mixed-use development that we all wanted. We've got 250,000 or 260,000 square feet of office and light industrial Class A space that's about to be issued, the COs out there. So all we're doing here is, I had a meeting with David, I guess it was about a year ago, and we started looking at these sub-area policies and realized, in my opinion, and I think David would concur, they're not consistent with what the intent of the settlement agreement from 2010, nor are they consistent with the MPUD and its limitations. There's still a host of limitations about the form of the development, the mixed-use nature, et cetera, et cetera. But suffice to say, we have already satisfied the biggest elements of the mixed-use development, and we already have the ability under the MPUD to trade off a bunch of the uses pursuant to the settlement agreement. It's just that, for some reason, there are these sub-area policies, I can't honestly figure out why they were ever adopted in the first place. So nothing new's really happening, we're not proposing to come in right now with a bunch of new residential. We are under contract and hoping to have some specialty grocers out front, some projects we're working on. We'll see what happens, but that's all we're doing, this little cleanup job, so we appreciate your help.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I see no one. David, anything?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. Chairman, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Before you adjourn today, I want to go over some, an item that we are, Planning and Development Department is presenting to the Board of County Commissioners on February 19th, which is to discuss the staggered terms of the Planning Commission. As you may recall, when the Board of County Commissioners made the decision, adoption, the, if, of changes in Chapter 200 of the Land Development Code, where the Planning Commission replaced the, the DRC's duties, and there was a new composition of the Planning Commission, the term, the item regarding terms stated that it would be set by resolution. So we are moving forward with a resolution to the Board of County Commissioners to establish terms for Planning Commission members. Those terms will be, there will be initial terms, and then, and then basically two-year terms after that time. So the initial terms, and we thought amongst ourselves what was the best way to do this, and we did it based on the amount of years that you had been collectively on the Planning Commission, whether it be in the former Planning Commission or in the current Planning Commission. So basically, the, the initial terms range between one and three years, and then with two, two-year terms after the expiration date of those terms. The terms are as follows, if you want me to go over those. So the, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman at this point in time, Chuck Gray and Kevin Ryman, would have three, three-year, initial three-year term, beginning August 9th, 2018, and expiring, which is the first meeting of the new Planning Commission, and expiring August 9th, 2021. Then with Mr. Pete Hansel and Mr. Jamie Girardi having two-year terms from August 9th, 2018, to August 9th, 2020. to August 9th, 2020. And with Mr. Roberto Sias and Mr. Michael Cox, one-year term from August 9th, 2018 to August 9th, 2019. The resolution also calls for an annual election of a chair and vice chair, and that annual election will occur on the second Planning Commission meeting in August. There was something else. That's what was on the brain. There's others.
The one thing that you mentioned was that any of the commissioners can be reappointed if they...
They can be. That's correct. They're eligible for reappointment no earlier than 90 days prior to the end of their term. It, they're filled in this, they're filled in the same manner as the original appointment. And there is some language about if a mem, in, in the event the Board of County Commissioners fails to reappoint the member, a member, or fails to appoint a new member prior to the end of the term, the Planning Commission member shall continue to serve beyond the expiration date of their term until such time as a new reappointment or an appointment is made.
Okay.
I think that's all. And that will be going to the Board of County Commissioners on February 19th, a couple of weeks.
And Denise, none of this affects the school board?
None of this affects the school board member. Good point, David. Absolutely. This does not, the, their term, their, their term is determined by the school board, so it does not affect the school board member.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
No, I don't need a motion. It was just like information, because I know it has been asked about in the past, and I just wanted to know that we were diligently working on that, and it's actually scheduled before the board on the 19th of February.
Okay.
Okay.
One point we need to, I think, clear up is that we need to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I don't think we ever approved consent agenda, PC 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, so I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I thought we did that.
Just in case.
Doesn't hurt to do it again. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Our motion adjourned?
Moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.